President, our council president or Pat Elliott, council at large are not going to be here this evening. And so therefore that creates a lack of a quorum in one of our committee meetings. So I just went, of the four that were scheduled for tonight, the Parks and Recreation Committee will not be meeting to the absence of a quorum. We will be having the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Meeting, Rules, Ordinances, and Ethics, as well as our regular bi-weekly Finance Committee meeting. So with that, I'll begin with the Rules Committee meeting at 6:02. And due to the absence of Pat Elliott, we only have one other member of the committee, but we do have a quorum. I have two matters to address, and then we'll open it up to our other member and then to council at large. We have a request from the Law Department regarding the recently passed chicken legislation to remove a phrase from Seven Hills Ordinance 505.022 defining wild dangerous animals or undomesticated animals, reptiles, or insects, or group of insects within the city, chickens or fowl. So the request is to remove the phrase chickens or foul from subsection A to bring this ordinance into conformity with the recent ordinance that was just passed. Tom, anything?
I would like to leave foul in there if possible.
Ah, I see what you're saying.
We have one individual that I know of that has pigeons, and they're not supposed to have pigeons, but they kind of dealing with issues with the building department. So I, chickens is fine.
Gotcha.
You know, I don't want people to have, start having ducks and geese and turkeys and everything else.
So what if the language was changed to read foul with the exception of chickens, or any foul other than chickens? In other words, keep, keep-
Keep the foul in there.
Right. I'm okay with that.
F-O-U-L, foul?
F-O-W-L.
Oh, okay. Keep the foul in there one way or the other.
But make it clear that chickens are permitted. Okay. Does anyone else on council have anything on this? Mr. Law Director, anything?
Your ordinance, but anyone else?
Okay, anyone in the audience? All right, I'll make a motion then that we submit a transmittal to change that language to indicate that chickens are permitted, but no other foul is or are. And we'll count on the Law Department to properly phrase it for our next meeting.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Roll call, Delaculias.
Snitzki, yes.
Thank you. We have one other matter, and this is regarding ordinance 101, 2021, that was tabled on 11/16. This is the ordinance that is proposed to modify the meeting time for council to commence immediately after the committee meetings have concluded. And the Law Director brought up a point at the last meeting that the proposed ordinance language attempts to define what, where the location of the meetings are to be conducted. And he indicated that that is a matter for the charter rather than to be modified by an ordinance. I don't want to speak for you, sir. Do you have anything to add to that or clarify?
No, actually, the ordinance itself refers to the charter, which says council meetings shall be in here.
Okay.
You can change it, you just have to, the charter change.
Right, right. So-
I don't know even where that came from. I didn't see it on the transmittal.
No, I know it wasn't on the transmittal, it just showed up.
I don't know how it just showed up.
So is it within your understanding that it will be proper to just simply strike that additional language from ordinance and just proceed with the rest of it as is?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to strike that, I'm sorry, before I do that, does anyone on council have anything on this?
Is the ordinance on for tonight?
No, it's, it's been tabled.
Okay. The one question I have about that, and I, I read it, but I can't remember, what, I mean, is it saying that we absolutely have to have a meeting here? Because what, what if we have a fire or a flood or a tornado hits the building? I mean-
Yeah, but we did Zoom meetings during the COVID.
That we had, we had a legal thing from the state that we could do that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to Councilman Snitzki.
Yes.
Okay. As we've heard from the Law Director, the Charter specifically says council meetings and all other meetings of this body shall be in this room.
No problem.
Okay? If there was a fire, a flood, or something that prevented us from meeting in this room, or there was a meeting of such magnitude that we couldn't fit in this room in occupancy, by a vote of five, our charter allows us to suspend the charter, rules of the charter for a valid emergency. So in that case, we'd go to council and say there's a fire, flood, or a capacity issue. Shall we suspend the charter? We'll take a roll call, and if we have five votes, you can have your meeting in any room you wanted.
Okay, I didn't know that, thank you.
That applies to the whole charter.
Does anyone else on council have any comments about 101-2021? Anyone in the audience? Okay, thank you. I will make a motion to refer this back to the Law Department to strike the language indicating that, defining where the meetings are to be held, and presenting that back to council for consideration. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Delaculias.
Snitzki, yes.
Thank you. Is there anything else from any member of council to be brought to the attention of Rules Committee?
May I make a statement on that ordinance?
Yes.
Do you think it's possible to put an effective date in that ordinance, possibly effective at the first of the year? Because we're putting out our calendars of meeting dates, and it probably would be a lot easier to start it at the beginning of the year than in the middle.
Okay, I will, I'll make, does anybody have a problem with that, defining it as of January 1st? All right, I'll make a motion to add that additional language indicating that the effective date of any change would be January 1st or later.
I'll second that motion.
Delaculias.
Snitzki, yes.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else on council have anything for the Rules Committee? Administration, audience? Okay, thank you. With that, I will make a motion at 6:09 to adjourn the Rules Committee.
Second the motion.
Delaculias.
Snitzki, yes.
Thanks, we're adjourned at 6:09. We will now have the meeting of our next committee, which is Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development. Okay, thank you very much, Councilman Snitzki here. There's a, there's a variance to concur at the end of the meeting tonight. I've talked to a couple individuals about this already, there's a lot split, the, the car wash, what's, what's the name of the car? I can't remember the name of the car wash off the top. Velvet Touch. Velvet Touch, the car wash and the building next door, which used to be the old Midas, which is basically just a large garage now, are on one lot. And the owner of the car wash would like to split that off, the car wash off from the garage, the old Midas garage, and split that lot in half. He has a buyer for the car wash, he'd like to sell it and move on with his life, and would still like to retain the rental income from the garage. So that's the main thing tonight for planning, zoning, and building. We also have a, a zoning variance, which we tabled a while back regarding 715 Ridgeview And I, there, I think there, we want to have some discussion about this before we decide to concur or not concur with the zoning board's approval of the variance. I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Delaculio first, since it's his ward. Thank you. I believe and I hope that everybody on council has had an opportunity to take a look at the properties in question. I stopped by, I don't know, maybe 10 days ago, 12 days, I've lost track of the days. My impression is, I don't quite understand why there is a need for such an expansive amount of concrete in a residential area. It appears that it would unnecessarily commercialize a residential area. I'm not real clear what the, what the specific hardship is that would require this to be presented, but I'm willing to listen to further discussion. It just seems to me a bit much in a residential area. I sat through the Plant and Zoning meeting for that as part of my duties. I quite honestly have to agree, Mr. Delaculio, I don't see what the practical difficulty of it is. That's the determining factor, generally speaking, in these cases. If a variance is requested, at least it's been my experience, in a residential area and an immediate neighbor doesn't feel comfortable about it, generally speaking, in my past experiences, that tends to be the end of the issue normally. Now, the neighbor needs to understand that if he wants to put in a nine-foot wide driveway there, he's well within the property requirements to do that. But as far as needing this extra wide driveway, I, I just, based upon the minutes and what I, what I've seen and what I, what I've learned over the years, I just don't see the practical difficulty for it. Now, I must admit, I don't think drainage will be an issue. I don't think that snow will be an issue. I just have an issue with the fact that it is fairly heavily encroaching into the neutral zone between the houses. That's my overwhelming concern with this one. And I know they struggle with it, the zoning board, but I, I just think that, I just think it's, it's too much, as you said, for a residential area. That's my thoughts on it. Anybody else on council wish to comment on this?
Chairman, can I speak?
Go ahead, please.
I went over and met with the neighbors, homers, I believe, the Malattis. And I agree with you, Councilman Snitzki, that, that extra wide driveway would be so close to their two-bedroom windows that if there was a car or truck, especially a truck running there, it'll be, especially if it's in the middle of the night or late at night, it's going to be right next to their bedroom windows. And I don't think they need that wide of a driveway on the side of the house. So I agree with Councilman Delaculio and Snitzki. Thank you.
Councilman Martin, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, Councilman, is, is the inference that the, the board, the zoning board made an error in this case in their determinations?
No. If I may? Go ahead. I don't think it's, it's necessarily incumbent on us to determine whether there's an error made. These, these come before council for a reason. Our concurrence is required in order to either approve what their, what the zoning board has recommended, or not go along with it, disapprove it. That doesn't necessarily mean that there's been an error. Everyone is an individual and votes their conscience based on the facts as they see And again, I don't think it's an erroneous matter rather than a matter of they saw it differently than perhaps we do. And if I may, Councilman Martin, that was sort of what I was going to be getting to with, with Councilman Delaculio says.
Okay. I just want to establish that this council has the ability to overturn an amicus decision by the zoning board regardless of whether it was an error of fact or not. And that's what this issue is. This is an issue not based upon an error in fact from the zoning board, but it's based upon our individual opinions, based upon what we have observed and what your potential outcomes could be.
Yes, and our experiences, yes.
Okay.
Councilman Cool, do you wish, do we add to this, or?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I just think that when you're adding that, that type of space with concrete, you're inviting a lot of options or maybe variables that could, you know, be a detriment to the neighbors. Thank you.
Okay. I will bring this up in, in my miscellaneous notes, requesting a vote on this. Do you think that's appropriate to do it then? Yes, I think we probably should first vote it out of the committee. Ah. And we- We just tabled it, though. It was tabled in council, that's how it wound up back in the committee. So we got to vote it out of committee? So we got to vote it out of the committee. Okay. You may want to invite other comments, if there's anybody else. I, I have, yes. Does anybody in the administration wish to speak on this issue? And does anybody in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Please.
My name's Bob Malati, I'm at 65 Ridgeview Drive, and I just wanted to thank the members for coming out and taking a look and reconsidering this on our behalf. Thank you.
Want me to make the motion? If you would, go ahead. Mr. Chair, I will move that the committee vote back out the tabled ordinance before it's regarding, or the tabled zoning board decision. However, I would also ask that our vote include a recommendation of no on the approval. I will second the motion moving it out of committee and back onto the agenda. Delaculias.
Snitzki, yes.
Curiosus.
Curiosus, yes. Can we do it tonight?
Sure.
I'd like to do it tonight, be done with it.
I think we can.
Yeah.
It's out of the committee now, it's a floor motion.
Yeah. All right. I have something that was given to me, and, Mr. Engineer, Mr. Schmitzer, it's from the Planning Commission. And I didn't see this before, it's about raising canes. Have you seen this? I, I'm, I'm just, I just had this in my packet, and I'm just, I'm-
What are you referring to, that you have? I have nothing in front of me.
It's, it's the Planning Commission, it's for the meeting, dated November 12th. Go ahead, sir.
Is there a concern about the preliminary plan submitted by Raising Canes? I'm familiar with that.
There, there's no concern, I just, it just appeared in my, in my file, and I just wondered what, can you give me a synopsis of what this is about?
Yeah, you're the liaison on the planning, so you got a copy of it.
Okay.
That's it.
This is for the next-
There's no action required by council.
Okay, this is for the next meeting, then. Okay. The next Planning Commission meeting. Okay, thank you very much. All right.
It's in the same file, it's signed with it.
Yeah. That is all that I can see tonight for Planning, Zoning, Building, and Economic Development, unless somebody else on council or in the administration has something. Mr. Mayor, please have the floor.
I am. I don't notice on the agenda this evening the zoning board floor motion for Wash Chicken This was passed by zoning on October 12th, representatives of companies were at our last meeting, assurances were made it was going to be on this agenda. The information was forwarded to the council office on October 13th, and is with winter approaching, they need to get their sign up.
Can I, can I speak? I believe it was passed at the last meeting in October, and nobody realized it at the last meeting, so this has already been passed already.
Yeah.
It was passed at the October 26th meeting, I believe.
There was, there was- This is, this has been a communication sent to the people, and then we're good.
Is that true?
Has there been a communication, Carol, do you know?
It, it was sent, it was sent to Backstreet Development, not the sign company, and unfortunately, it came back with an incorrect address that we had been provided. But the building department is aware that that's, and I think the sign gentleman has been informed he's ready to go.
Well, it's wonderful news, thank you.
Mr. Grassi, can you confirm that? Do you know if that's, where, he's ready to go?
Oh, I can't confirm that, no.
Okay. Do we know that he's been, does anybody know if he's been notified?
The council president did notify him, my, it's my understanding, we can confirm that, though.
Okay. Because he has been waiting a while, and I, I understand that the original paperwork went to the owner versus the sign company, and there was a miscommunication on their part. But, you know, I'd like to get it going for him if we can.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that was my only concern. If it's been passed, we'll, we'll see to it.
Okay.
That they get notified.
All right.
Just want to provide good customer service, and, you know, we embrace new business in the city, I think we all concur on that.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else? Anybody else in the audience have anything to say regarding Planning, Zoning, Building, and Economic Development? If not, I'll adjourn the meeting at 6:21. Delaculias, second. Snitzki, second. We're out at 6:21. Delaculias. Snitzki, yes.
Curiosus, yes.
Okay, we're out at 6:21. Thank you. Thank you. We have our Finance Committee meeting next, we have a number of different things to discuss. I just want to indicate at the top that we do have a handful of items here that appear to involve employee compensation. So I'm going to go through the things that are not employee compensation first, but we're going to have to consider going into executive session on the compensation matters. Okay, I just have a note here that the mayor has some appointments to the city's Civil Service Commission. Is that correct, Mayor? And there's nothing for this committee to consider, other than it's in the folder.
Yeah, I mean, during the regular council portion, I'll be asking council to extend two, two current civil service members. Jeff Gazmala, retired police officer, and Ron Durkin, also a police officer but from another community. Both are current board members, and I'm, be asking council tonight to reappoint them for new terms that extend through January 2027.
Okay.
Ron Durkin, Jeff Gazmala.
We'll consider that at the appropriate time, thanks. I have a request from Police Chief Saloom regarding dispatching and fuel for the balance for 2021. Chief, welcome.
How you doing?
Okay.
That request is for 2022.
Oh, yes, yeah, I, but for some reason they put 2021 here at the top, so it's a title.
Yeah, I see it up at the top. So that's our dispatching service for police and fire through Brexville Satellite Office, Chagrin Valley Dispatching. Signed the contract a couple of years ago, so each year it just gets renewed on the consent agenda for the dollar amount. This year it's, total is $186,410, that includes dispatching, the maintenance for our police radios, and also the user fee that the city Cleveland collects, but they're going to be doing it through the dispatch center. So they kind of wrapped it all up into one.
Mm-hmm. So the request is for $186,410.
Correct.
Does anybody on the Finance Committee have anything on this?
Nothing.
This is a regular thing we do, you know, yearly. Anyone else on council? Audience, administration, anyone? Okay, on the dispatching then, I'll make a motion that we place a measure on the next agenda approving $186,410 payment to Chagrin Valley Dispatch for our 2022 police and fire dispatching.
Martin, second.
Delaculias.
Martin, yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have a request for $40,000 for police gasoline in 2022.
That's correct.
This is another reg thing that we do regularly, because we don't know what it's going to be.
Correct. Every year we do it, we get our fuel through WEX, which is at Myers, and it needs Finance Committee approval for this dollar amount. And every year it's about the same, obviously, but the gas price is going up, there's a slight increase, but we don't know exactly what the exact amount's going to be, or exactly how much, how many gallons we're going to use, so it's a pretty good estimate.
Okay. Anyone on the committee?
I have nothing.
Council as a whole, administration, audience? All right, I'll make a motion that the committee recommend the approval of a payment of $40,000 to WEX, W-E-X, for the police purchase of gasoline in 2022. Is there a second?
Martin, second.
Delaculias.
Martin, yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Chief, I have a stack here, do you have anything else?
I think that should be it. If there's something else in there I don't know about, I can certainly come back up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have a request from the Finance Director, Mr. Petruniac, regarding, oh, that's one of the things that are going to be executed. I'm sorry, I have to pull out the ones that we need to go into a closed meeting on. This is a request from the Service Director, Mr. Johnson. I'm requesting legislation to amend ordinance 145, 2019 to allow the city to exceed the $30,000 annual limit by $6,000 for diesel fuel. The Service Director is expecting that we will need the additional $6,000 to complete 2021, and a decision memo has been attached to the proposed ordinance. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Every year we try to estimate what our consumption is going to be for diesel. We share the diesel pump with, with the Fire Department also, and we estimated that we would spend $30,000 annually for two years. We enter, we're in a consortium with Brexville, Rocky Heights, and what have you, and we estimated 30,000, and we've pretty, we're pretty much going to exceed that for this year. And as a matter of fact, we received an invoice yesterday for another $5,000. So my request for an increase would actually need to be increased to 13,000 from the 6,000 in order to complete this year.
Okay. Anything from the committee?
Yeah, is that a total expenditure of 43,000?
That would be correct, that's our estimate for this year.
And considering that's more than 34, 35%, what's the causation?
It's, it's consumption.
Well, I understand that, but no, who's, who's consuming it?
Service Department and the Fire Department.
Yes, but who's making the difference that causes a one-third overage of an expenditure? I mean, that's not a reasonable request normally. One, one, missing the mark by one-third means there's something going on. What's going on?
Well, we are, we are doing more leaf collection, is, you know, we've increased the amount of time that we're on the road, snow plowing, and those items use diesel fuel. I'm, I'm not real sure if the Fire Department's consumption has increased, but my assumption is that the Fire Department diesel fuel consumption has increased also.
Oh, I would like to know that. I mean, I don't know, is the fire chief here tonight? I don't think he is, but I'm not sure what would cause them to have increased fuel usage of any significant amount of this nature.
I, I believe our estimate was low, Councilman, from the beginning. The estimate was based on, you know, a previous year, and I think we did exceed last year also.
Okay. You see where I'm coming from, though.
Right. And, and, and I've, in an ordinance that I also requested for the next biennium, I've requested that our annual dollar amount be increased to 50,000.
Okay. So, so am I correct in assuming that the, the increase is not related to cost but related to usage, consumption?
Well, essentially it's consumption because the prices are fixed for two years.
I just want to get that on the record.
The prices are fixed for two years.
Got it. We're paying a fixed price, it's just that we've used more.
Right, before the next biennium, the rate is increased.
Right, right. Does anyone else on council have anything? Administration, audience? Administration, audience? Okay, with that, I will make a motion to uh, increase ordinance one forty-five, twenty-nineteen by the requested thirteen thousand dollars, making it a total of forty-three thou- forty-three thousand dollars for um, the current year. Is there a second?
Martin, second.
Delco, yes.
Martin, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Ah, speaking of that very thing, the next thing is a request from the service director um, asking council's approval for uh, the next two-year um, purchase of uh, diesel fuel from Porch Petroleum um, with a fixed annual price uh, of fifty thousand dollars. So perhaps you can kinda supplement a little bit what you've already told us, but it sounds like this is, this is where it was gonna go originally anyway.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the next biennium, the price per gallon for diesel fuel has increased about six, sixty cents a gallon. And um, you know, as a result of um, the, the previous discussion, uh, and to, and to further address Councilman Martin's um, uh, questions, I started to try to evaluate exactly what our consumption was. And, and I came up with about seventeen thousand gallons. So I'm basing uh, the next biennium estimate on that seventeen thousand, and which is why I'm requesting that we um, have a fifty thousand dollar per, per year not to exceed on, on the next piece of legislation.
When, when will they determine the price per gallon? At what point? When the contract is signed or beginning of the year? How's, how does that work?
The city of Brexville took bids. I think they start their bidding process in July. We got the results about a week or so ago. November seventeenth, actually, was the bid opening date. And um, they send us the bid results. And um, for, because we don't um, uh, because we don't order more than fifteen hundred gallons at a time, we pay a bit of a premium as opposed to communities that can buy seventy-five hundred gallons at a time. So there's a, there's a difference, price differential there. And um, so our price is two dollars, two-point-eight-four-four dollars per gallon.
I see that. Still, that's gotta be below market.
And that's for a two-year period.
Okay. Anyone on the committee?
Oh, I do, absolutely. Somebody has to help me do the math here. Um, you indicated the likely price increase is sixty, sixty cents per gallon. Okay. And you're indicating about seventeen thousand gallons for usage, and you're asking for an expenditure of fifty thousand dollars. Is that right?
That's correct.
So shouldn't the expenditure be forty thousand dollars?
Um, when you do the math, councilman, it's about forty-two or forty-three thousand. But I'm requesting it not to exceed fifty thousand, so we're not in this position again. My, my assumption of seventeen thousand gallons is not based on anything magical. It's just an assumption on my part from looking at invoices and trying to estimate what our consumption is.
Yeah, man.
Yes, go ahead.
These are great questions. I just wanted to talk about the consumption a little bit. In years, um, in recent years, um, with Lee Pickup, we had outsourced one of the crews. We had in-house, and correct me if I'm wrong, service director, we supplemented our in-house crew with an out, outsourced crew. We'd purchased new equipment to allow us to run two crews. So there's a savings on that end is that we've had two city crews out this year as opposed to one in-house and one out. And I do believe we added one truck to our snow plowing rotation from where our historical total is. So that's just two examples of why the consumption's up. Not answering your question, but I didn't feel we fully vetted the consumption thing earlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't mind rounding things up a little bit, but you, you're just rounding it up to a big number for no particular apparent reason other than it seemed like a nice round number. And I don't think that's the way you should do business. I think you should, you should justify why we're having an increase. Tell me what that percent increase should be, and that should be the number that gets rounded, not just round it up to a fifty grand.
Based on what we heard, you wanna take it down to forty-five thousand? It can always be amended at the end of next year.
I wanna take it where the mathematics leads me to take it. And that's where the service director needs to tell us.
Mr. Service Director, what was the actual number you were considering?
Hold on. I believe when I did the math, it was about forty-eight thousand dollars. Um, but hold on.
I thought I heard you say forty-two something.
Hold on, just a minute.
Uh, it's seventeen thousand gallons at a sixty percent, sixty cent increase. That's an additional twenty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars right there.
So, so.
What am I missing?
So for seventeen thousand gallons at two dollars, point-eight-four-four, um, I come up with forty-eight thousand, three-fifty-four-eighty. Sorry if I uh, misquoted the number earlier.
Councilman Martin?
Uh, yeah, then I've gotta ask the question from previously. You indicated it was a thirty thousand dollar expenditure, and you're asking for a thirteen thousand dollar overage, which puts us to forty-three thousand. And you're indicating that the base, that the seventeen thousand gallons is what you think we were, we're gonna be using, and then you wanted to round it up a little from there. So this seventeen thousand is well above where we are now. I mean, tell me where I'm wrong. I mean, I'm, I'm here to listen.
I don't understand what you're, what, what's the question again?
I just, I just got done voting on a, on a, on a request for, to increase the amount of expenditure from thirty thousand to forty-three thousand dollars.
Councilman Martin is asking the question, what was our consumption or anticipated consumption in twenty-twenty-one?
Fair question.
Yes.
I would assume it was the same. Well, I don't, I have no idea. We, we um, don't have a metering system, so I don't, I, yeah, I'd have to go through all of the invoices and look at how many gallons we purchased on every invoice.
Well, I want, I want, may I? This is for next year?
Yes.
Well, we could either amend it to something the councilman's comfortable with, or we can table it. And we can easily back into this. We, we purchased a diesel at a fixed rate, right?
Yes.
And we know what our invoices are. So invoices divided by the fixed rate will give us our gallons. And we'll know within eleven-twelfths of what we utilize this year. It's the, the facts are there, and I think we can satisfy this without.
No, I agree. That's just reasonable. Whatever, whatever the accurate numbers are, that's why I wanna feel comfortable.
I'll have those for you for the next councilman, for the next uh, council meeting.
Thank you.
Does anyone else on council have anything on this? Anything further from the administration, audience? So Councilman Martin, we have, it's the two of us. We need to vote. Uh, tell me what your preferences are.
My preference is to, to table the issue until we hear back the facts from the, from the uh, the department head.
So table it, and, well, finance meets again in two weeks.
Right.
Will this call, cause your department any distress?
Uh, the contract ends December thirty-first, so as long as council is willing to um, consider legislation prior to December thirty-first, we're fine.
And because the price has been bid per gallon, that won't change if we, as long as we approve it before the end of the year?
That's correct.
I, I do request that the, the information we get is consumption, and who's consuming it and why, and why there is a, a difference, you know, from both the, you know, whether it's from the fire folks or from us, from the road folks.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I, I'd move that we table the issue regarding um, the additional contract for fuel. Until such time, uh, we can review it the next meeting with the information received back from the uh, department head.
I'll second. Roll call?
Martin, yes.
Delco, yes, it's tabled. Thank you. We have another request from the service department regarding uh, an agreement with NOACA to accept a grant of electric vehicle charging stations. Um, can you tell us a little bit about this?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, I received an email from gentlemen at NOACA that offered um, if the city was interested in electric vehicle charging stations for the city of Seven Hills. There, there's about a three or four county area that they are um, contacting communities. We made the final cut. They, they did come out um, and, and looked at our proposed site, which would be the overflow parking lot across from City Hall. Um, they looked at our site, um, and obviously um, you know, we're, we're in agreement with the site, and we made the final cut. So what is in front of you is an agreement. If council decides that we want to accept this, that they will provide the electric vehicle uh, charging stations. They will install them. They will maintain them uh, for a five-year period. So our agreement is to um, allow the charging stations to occupy the spaces for the next five years. If at the end of the five-year period, the city chooses not to, we are not obligated to keep the stations. The folks that use the stations will pay for the electricity that's consumed um, through, you know, their credit cards or debit cards. And NOACA will then remit those cash proceeds back to the city to reimburse for the cost of the electricity.
A hundred percent?
Yes, um.
Including the utility charge itself?
Yes. The, the consumers will actually pay the electric that they use to charge their, their electric vehicles. There are two types of charging stations. One is um, what I like to term like a slow trickle AC charge. The other is DC fast charging. So DC fast charging is used by folks that are just passing through, uh, and they wanna charge their vehicles very quickly. However, the, and the, the AC charging is for folks that can leave their car there for several hours or all day and charge. So um, I requested a combination of both. So I think it will um, be a real um, enhancement to the community. I sold this whole thing to them based on the fact that, you know, the Dairy Queen is coming, the um, the restaurants and what have you that are uh, down the hill, the rec center, um, so that um, you know, folks, I think it will attract folks to the community that wanna come charge their vehicles and take advantage of some of the amenities in this community.
So this is not a, correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a grant of money, but a grant of the installation of this and maintenance of this facility on city property.
They're, they're, they have, they have a grant from the Federal Highway Administration.
What's the amount?
I don't have a dollar amount, but they will provide all of the engineering, the installation, and the whole, the whole ball, ball of wax um, for these charging stations.
So is there any matching from the city?
There's nothing. We have to just agree to allow the charging stations to be here in the parking lot.
Do, do these stations require employees?
No, they don't.
And what about things like snow plowing and painting and?
They're, they're gonna strike the, the parking spaces. But I would assume we would want to plow the lot. We plow the lot now. So we would just continue to do the same thing that we've been doing.
So the individual vehicle pulls into a parking spot and connects up to the charging station?
Yeah, you plug it in.
But I mean, they sit there for some period of time and get charged up?
Yeah, there, there's probably gonna be some kind of a uh, user interface on the charging station, and you put in your debit card or your credit card um, to pay for the, to pay for the charge.
How many parking spots will they take here?
We requested a total of eight. Four uh, fast charging and four um, AC. Um, the city of Independence, incidentally, requested the same number. So I think, you know, between, I think the city of Seven Hills and the city of Independence probably requested the most stations. Most communities only asked for two. But uh, I asked for eight, and we got it.
Great. Councilman Martin, anything?
Yeah, tell me about the liability issues. Who's, who's liable for the damage to the equipment?
The, I'm, I'm not real sure about damage to the equipment. I'm not real sure what what would, what you're referring to in terms of damage to the equipment.
Oh.
If somebody runs over it, you're saying?
Somebody bangs into it, we hit it with a plow, who's, but mostly usage by the public. If the, if the charging cord severed, or if the devices run into, and there's damage occurs, who pays for it?
My assumption is that NOACA is going to um, get involved with that. They're gonna be in, they're actually gonna be in charge of uh, the computer software that, you know, maintains usage and collects the money and sends the money back to us. So my assumption is, is that it would be them. I, I read through the agreement, and I, I didn't see anything where, I didn't see anything that the city would be responsible for.
Are these devices operated and maintained by this public entity or by a subcontractor?
No, well, NOACA would be responsible for the maintenance of them.
Is this time-sensitive?
Uh, they're requesting that the signed agreements be returned to them by December twenty-second.
So there's a little bit of time, yeah. Does anyone else on council have anything on this?
Did all of council get a copy of the agreement? No, or not yet?
No, because it's uh, it's in the finance committee files, so I know they haven't received it yet. Anyone else in the administration or audience? Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion uh, to remove this out of finance committee with the recommendation that it be placed on the next agenda, but not with an emergency, so that everybody has an opportunity to go through this contract. It's pretty extensive. It looks like about a a seven, eight, ten-page contract. It's such a novel thing. We've never done anything like this in the city before. I think it's incumbent on us to really understand what it is we're doing here. And since we have a little bit of time, we can get it on an agenda and um, have a closer look at it in the, in the intervening time before we vote.
I, I have another piece of comment, if you don't mind. I, I, I would also like to get feedback again from, from Jack related to, you know, the auditing of the electrical usage. How do we know that the electrical usage is accurate? Who's installing the meter, and uh, are we going to send up someone out to look at it every month to ensure that what they're reporting is accurate?
Um, councilman, it's, it's my understanding that it, there's a it's all gonna be um, computerized. That we will be able to access that same website that monitors consumption, monitors usage, monitors the revenue that's received. So we should be able to see that ourselves.
Okay. Well, can you ask that question about how we are gonna see that ourselves? I mean, we wanna make sure that uh, you know, we can audit this. You know, it should be an audible item.
I, I think once you, I think once you read through the agreement, um, a lot of your questions will be answered.
Okay.
Chair, Chairman?
Yes, please, go.
Director Johnson, you said it needed to be signed by December twenty-second?
They, um, NOACA has requested that the signed agreement be returned to them by November twenty-second.
December twenty-second.
December twenty-second.
Okay, so our next meeting's December fourteenth, and then we won't have another one till the twenty-eighth, so it would have to be an emergency at the next meeting. And the fourteenth.
If we have to do it, then we will. So, so uh, is your, your preference that we, as part of this motion, we include the emergency clause? Is that what you are requesting?
Yes.
Yes, because we need it done by the twenty-second, so that would, the fourteenth would be, so we're requesting emergency.
Councilman Martin?
It's the pig and a polk thing, again. I, I can't get my questions answered. And, and why should I vote for something I can't get questions answered?
So, okay, I will make a motion then to place it on an agenda without the emergency provision. We can always add it. And we have an opportunity to actually get it on an agenda. We're gonna need two votes tonight to make that happen. So, okay, with that, I'll make a motion that uh, this item be placed on the next council agenda without the emergency clause.
Martin, second.
Delco, yes?
Martin, yes.
Thank you. Mayor, we have a request, a copy of a letter regarding industrial commercial properties.
No, that's not for this evening.
That's not for this evening? Okay.
It should never have been in.
It should never have been in the folder.
I'm just telling you what's in the folder.
We addressed that in the, okay, executive session last time. That's fine.
So I'm assuming that this economic development ordinance is also part of that. The only other three things that are in the folder are all regarding employee compensation, which is a, an executive, which our executive session matters. So with that, I will make a motion to go into executive session to discuss employee compensation.
Martin, second.
Roll call?
Martin, yes.
Delacool, yes? We're in executive session at 6:51. We probably, we need the mayor, all of council, law director, and I'm probably going to need the finance director too.
We have some parks today, right?
Finance Committee motion to go into executive session for employee performance.
Martin, second.
Roll call?
Martin, yes.
Delaculay, yes. Okay, we are in executive session at 7:56. Eight oh six. Actually, I'm sorry, we're going to reconvene the Finance Committee meeting at eight oh six. And we have a couple of things to get through before we go on to our regular council meeting. At this time, I'm going to go through a little bit of a presentation we have from the Finance Department. Then I'm going to make a motion that the Finance Director discuss this further with law and bring us back some more clarity on a couple of things. There's a request from the mayor to move a few employees into Chapter 151 for the purposes of conformity and that everybody be on the same page with regard to compensation and work efforts, et cetera. The question arises whether we can include those employees under Section 151. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to make a motion to request that the Finance Director clarify this a little bit more with law before we proceed further with it. Is there a second?
Oh, Martin, second.
Delaculay, yes?
I'm Martin, yes.
Thank you. The matter is referred back to the Finance Director. And I think Councilman Martin, you may have something.
Ah, yes. If I could... Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for, to increase the top of the range, of the pay range for the Community Service Director to $61,000 and in conjunction with the expansion of the job description.
The motion is to place it on an agenda?
It is.
I'll second the motion.
And to be, to be effective January 1st of 2021.
Got it. Thank you. I will second that motion. Roll call?
Martin, yes.
Delaculay, yes. Motion carries. Anything further?
I have nothing further.
And nor do I. Is there anyone else who has anything further for the Finance Committee this evening? On council, administration, audience?
Administration?
Yes, Mayor?
We'd ask council to consider a motion for our park supervisor salary range as well this evening.
Chairman, the mayor suggesting that the park supervisor who was going to have a range, a top, increase in the top range to... I forget the number exactly.
I believe the request is for 61,000.
No, I believe the request was 50. It should be in the parks folder for the parks supervisor.
And there's no parks folder.
And there's no parks meeting tonight.
I believe a request based upon...
Oh, I'm being told that there was nothing in the parks folder. Okay. Mayor, can we bring this up at the next meeting?
No, we're going to bring it up this evening.
Do you have it?
No, it's a simple, I'd like to entertain, council to entertain a motion to change the maximum salary range for the parks and ball field supervisor role to 50,000.
And, but there's something that you provided the council on this?
It's my understanding that the Recreation Director had sent this to be included in the... It's my understanding that the Recreation Director had sent this to be included in the Recreation folder. And absent a Recreation meeting today, discussions were had before the meeting that anything that was going to be in Recreation would be handled in Finance.
Okay, I, I'm being told that there's nothing in that folder. I will make a motion, however, to increase it as the, to increase the upper end of the range as the mayor has requested, subject to whatever was submitted from the Recreation Department.
Um, second.
Roll call?
Uh, Martin, yes.
Delaculay, yes. Is there anything further for the Finance Committee?
I have nothing further.
Nor do I.
Mr. Chairman.
Council, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like council to take into consideration, making a motion um... about indexing Chapter 151 salary ranges to the percentage increase that OPRS pays each year. Did I miss that?
Is there anybody who has anything on this on the council?
You know, I apologize, Chairman. I, could you, there was a piece of paper I sent down the, down the table. He sent it right back to me. Yes, boomerang it back to me. Thank you. I thought it was a different, I thought it was a different item. It's a stapled piece. Thank you. And I apologize. Thank you. Mayor, you're absolutely correct. Okay, I'll go ahead and make a, a, a motion to amend Section 151.091 to tie the salary range for employees listed in Chapter 151 to the percentage increase in the minimum monthly O P E R S credit and in order to provide equity for the positions on an annual basis.
I'll second the motion. Roll call?
Martin, yes.
Chairman, I'd like a further motion that this, this was the measure that, um, uh, the inflation for this year has already happened, so I was asking for this, this, uh, Chapter 151 adjustment to effect of January 1, 2021. And if you want to rescind the other one for 2021, you can.
I'll so rescind. A move to, move to rescind. Okay, thank you. Second.
Roll call?
Martin, yes.
Delaculay, yes. Anything further, Mayor?
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else for the Finance Committee, from anybody on the dais? Administration, audience? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee meeting at 8:14. Is there a second?
Uh, Martin, second.
Delaculay, yes?
Martin, yes.
We adjourned at 8:14. Thank you, everyone. That concludes our committee meetings for the evening. We'll now proceed to our regular council...